Good evening, everybody. Welcome. We're glad to have you with us. It is the regular monthly meeting of the Lexington County School District Board of Trustees for Lexington III. It is Tuesday, November the 12th, 6:00 p.m. We are at the district office and all seven board members are present. At this time, we are going to ask Izzy Gonzalez and Nyla Coleman to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Now, now I'm going to say the prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussions, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of the community. Amen.
Thank you, girls both, for doing that for us. At this time, we are going to move to item 1.4, the approval of the agenda. Board members, you have the agenda before you. Are there any motions to amend?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to amend the agenda of the regular monthly school board meeting held today, Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at the district office to add Agenda Item 6.6, Approval for Newly Elected Board Member to Attend the 2024 South Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charleston, South Carolina on December the 7th and 8th, 2024. I am making this motion to add Agenda 6.6 due to the exigent circumstance that the school board conference will occur prior to the next regularly scheduled school board meeting on December the 10th, 2024.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. We have a motion from Mr. Kaufman to amend the agenda of our regular monthly school board meeting today, Tuesday, November the 12th, at 6:00, to add Item 6.6, Approval for Newly Elected School Board Member to Attend the 2024 South Carolina School Boards Association's Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charleston, South Carolina on December 7th and 8th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Carey. Any more discussion? Carey, now, all those in favor of amending the agenda, raise your right hand. Thank you. Motion is, agenda is amended to include Item 6.6. Also, board members, you have in your packet the minutes from the October 8th regular board meeting and the October 21st special call meeting. You've had a chance to look over these. Without objection, we will approve the minutes as presented. Minutes are approved. We will move on to Item 2.0, Recognition, and 2.1 is Recognition of Students Who Earned Perfect Scores on the 2023-2024 End-of-Course Testing with Ms. McKenzie Taylor, Director of Public Information.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow board members. It is my privilege this evening to recognize 29 students who earned perfect scores during the 2023-2024 school year on End-of-Course Testing at Batesburg-Leesville Middle and Batesburg-Leesville High Schools. End-of-Course exams in South Carolina are standardized tests given at the high school level to assess students' mastery of specific subjects, including Algebra I, Biology I, English II, and U.S. History. These exams serve as a key measure of student learning and account for 20% of a student's final grade in a respective course. End-of-Course exams are intended to ensure consistency and academic rigor across the state and help evaluate both individual student performance and overall school effectiveness in core subject areas. Last year, we had 25 students here in our district achieve perfect scores on South Carolina's End-of-Course exams, and remarkably, we had four students who actually excelled with perfect scores in multiple subjects, contributing to our district's 29 total perfect scores overall. And to break it down for everyone, there were 15 perfect scores in Biology I, six perfect scores in Algebra I, seven perfect scores in English II, and one perfect score in U.S. History. And of course, this achievement reflects not only the hard work of our students, but also of our staff members as well. And so this evening, we are proud to present each of these students with a yard sign so that they can be so proud of their academic achievements. And we're going to also allow, by having these yard signs there in their yards, everyone who drives by to share in their academic success as well. So, students, when I call your name, if you could please come up front, Mr. McGinnity is going to present you with your yard sign. And if you could just gather here up front, I'm going to attempt at least a group picture at the end. And we may have to break it into two groups because of the large number of students. But we will start with our Algebra I perfect scores. Isabella Kaufman, Lexie Davis, Zachary Hall, McKenzie Hildebrand, Catherine Shealy, and Bishop Sims. If y'all could come forward. Our Biology I perfect scores were DeChondria Dennis, Kira Frye, Sarah Gonzalez Morales, Ellie Hall, Lionel Jerez, Evan Kirkland, Rebecca Nurse, Sarah Pergier, Andrew Rodriguez Hernandez, Addison Smith, and Graham Watson. Our English II perfect scores were Amani Floyd, April Garvin, and Nathan Jones. And Nathaniel Cook, he earned a perfect score in U.S. History. And then finally, we want to recognize our students who earned two perfect scores in English II and Biology I, and that was Gabriella Adams, Cameron Kirkland, Maggie Landry, and Marissa Stewart. All right, students, I'm going to attempt to get a group picture here, so bear with me.
Member Ty Bautknight for his service to Lexington School District III. And McKenzie is still up here with us.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here tonight. It's nice to have a full house. Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my privilege this evening to recognize outgoing Board of Trustee Member, Mr. Ty Bautknight, for his years of service to the Lexington III Board. Since his election to the Board of Trustees in 2021, Mr. Bautknight has served with dedication and commitment. His unwavering focus on advancing education, supporting our schools, and advocating for our students and educators has made a lasting impact. We are most certainly grateful for your service, Mr. Bautknight, your leadership, and your contributions to the growth and success of our district. And we do have a small token of our appreciation to give to you this evening in recognition of your faithful service. We present to you a framed, custom piece of artwork by local artist Amanda O'Swalt, and it has all of the highlights of the town of Batesburg-Leesville, and we hope that every time that you see it, that you will remember the contributions that you made, not only to Batesburg-Leesville School District, but also to our community as well. So, thank you for your service. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, McKenzie, and thank you, Ty, for your dedication to us these past few years. Item 3.0, we're going to start with consent, with 3.1, the financial report, with Ms. Roden, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening. You got your statements for October in your packet. Highlights for this month, we're getting, September was the end of our quarter, so we received additional federal revenue this month. It's not quite as high as last year because our ESAR money is gone. September 30th was the last day to expend those funds. We spent 100% of our funds and did not need a carryover provision at all. Do you have any specific questions about the revenue and income statements that we gave you this month? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This time, we will go to Item 3.2, our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Once again this year, the South Carolina Department of Education offered school safety grants to each of the districts, and the South Carolina State Board of Education recently approved $250,000 for our school district. The focus this year has been on upgrading and replacing internal and external door locks, so this is going to allow us to bake those upgrades, but also add additional card swipes at entry points throughout our schools. Last year, we received $307,757,000 for safety upgrades, so two-year total of $557,757 in grants to make safety upgrades to our district through the State Department of Education. On Tuesday, October 22nd, we again had our student athletes go through the Heart of Panther screenings, and this time, we completed 33 cardiovascular screenings through the MB USC School of Cardiovascular Technology for all of our students in grade 8 through 12th. We had 62 last year, kind of was a catch-up year, but again, so that's almost 102 years of cardiovascular screenings to protect our student athletes. The primary school has started a new program called Panther Ambassadors. There were 35 students selected for this inaugural event. These students were selected because they showed exceptional leadership, kindness, and a commitment to helping others. They will be taking on important roles such as delivering student mail, leading guests on school tours, and also helping on the safety patrol. Recently, our elementary school hosted an escape room literacy night on October the 15th. This was a mystery-themed night where students and families visited classrooms on the grade level hall, and also they focused on solving reading-centered mysteries. Students also got to show off their artwork and also browse the book character Pumpkin Patch in the media center, so it was a great event for our families. Once again, our drama, our Panther Players did an amazing job on their most recent production of Little Shop of Ours. If you got to 10, you saw it, it was an amazing show. Ivy Munderlin, Cheryl Felder, Joey Hyagren, and Ben Feister led the efforts to make sure that our students were well-prepared to put on another amazing performance. All of our schools participated in Red Ribbon Week, October 28th through November the 1st. Red Ribbon Week is the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation that has continued for a number of years. Along those same lines, our middle school school nurse, Stacy Neely, has developed a new game. It's a themed activity focused around the game Candy Land, if you remember playing that, some of it's a little bit longer ago than others. But students first participate in this activity on October 30th, and it is to help students understand the dangers of vaping. Mid-Carolina Electric Co-op once again has sponsored their Bright Ideas Grant. There were 20 winners selected from Lexington and Saluda County. We had three winners from the middle school, and that was Cory Beekbo, Laura Bishop, and Ivy Zimmerman. We had two $1,000 winners, which was the maximum, and one $900 winner. So, we had, we had three of the 20 teachers that were selected for the grant opportunity. Recently, we had 31 of our high school health occupation students attended the Health Occupation Students of America, usually this is referred to as HOSA, Fall Conference. This was at Newbury College. These future nursing and health occupation students got to participate in team-building activities. They got to listen to different healthcare speakers about opportunities for careers, and also they completed some hands-on activities in the new Health Science Building. We have had three outstanding Veterans Day programs in, at the middle school, the primary, and the high school, and one more to go, that the elementary school on Thursday night will have their Veterans Day program at 6:30 at the Fine Arts Center, and that is this Thursday, looking forward to that. All of our students recently participated in the Great Shakeout Earthquake Drill. Seems like all the earthquakes over in the rich and northeast area, and hopefully it stays over there and it come over here, but again, we have had some opportunities for our students to practice those drills. Our high school band finished another successful marching band season. They were the 1A lower state champions for the second consecutive year. They placed fifth out of 22 bands in the 1A state championship at Liberty High School on October the 19th. We have two student athletes that have recently received accolades for their performance. First is Braylon Velazquez Torres, who ran a best time of 17:01 at the cross-country meet. On October the 12th, he broke his own school record. This allows him to qualify for the South Regional National Qualifying Meet, so one more meet, and then he qualifies for the national meet. Again, he's been successful in our cross-country team. Also, John Sawyer was selected to play in the North-South All-Star Game on December the 21st. That's now known as the Touchdown Energy Bowl. It's held at Duck Shaw Stadium at Myrtle Beach High School. And also, Coach Greg Lawson will be an assistant coach on the North squad as well. So, proud and happy for those student athletes and Coach Lawson. Athletic playoffs are well underway, or we have wrapped some of those up for all of our sports. Volleyball qualified for the first round of the playoffs. Cross-country will be participating this Saturday for the state qualifying meet. Our girls tennis team advanced to the second round of the playoffs. Our competition cheer participated last week in the state qualifying meet. Our middle school volleyball and football team qualified for the Lexington playoffs, but unfortunately, the football game had to be canceled due to weather, and it does not look like that will be made up. Our varsity football team completed their season with a perfect 10-0 record, will be hosting Columbia High School this Friday for the first round of the two-way playoffs. And that's, a lot of things have happened since the last board meeting.
Thank you. Item 4.0, public participation. We have no cards. Great, so we will move on to Item 5.0, information items. 5.1, School Board Member Continuing Education, debriefing the 2024 Risky Business Seminar. And there were three of us that attended, and if anyone would like to speak and tell what they learned, that would be great.
Okay. One of the general sessions was cyber awareness by Lee Rankin, FBI Special Agent. He discussed several types of cyber attacks. The most common is a malware attack, short for malicious software. Programs are created to destroy computer systems. Phishing is a widespread attack. It is a cybercrime that uses social engineering to trick people into giving away sensitive information. Phishing attacks may be in emails, text messages, and phone calls. The goal is to get victims to click on malicious links, download harmful files, or share private information. The attacker may share a sense of urgency, create anxiety, have a baby crying in the background, for example. Ransomware is malware to force the target to pay a ransom demand. Agent Rankin addressed business email compromise or BEC. Criminals may send an email that has been slightly changed, and then payments are made to this new address. Other types of cyber attacks include cryptocurrency, chat GPT, generative AI, which uses voice cloning, and Microsoft's AI program can capture your voice in as little as three seconds, and imposter scams. According to the FBI's Annual Internet Crime Report, approximately $10.3 billion was reported in 2022, an increase in around $2 billion each year. Our role in combating cyber threats is to be informed and to act, respond, and report to the Internet Crime Complaint Center, or IC3.
Thank you. All right. I went to, the one that kind of sticks out in my mind was Insurance 101 for School Boards, and it was balance sheet protection for our school districts, and it was presented by Richard Moxley, who is with USI Insurance Services, who is, works closely with our SCISBIT and our school boards insurance trust policies that we have. But he kind of broke down for us the things that we have to do to protect the district's financial health, as far as insurance transfers from liabilities from property damage, employee claims, lawsuits, understanding coverage options such as your general liability and workers' comp. And it helps board members to know what our administration is doing, and excellent job of doing, that we don't really have to worry about it, but it was enlightening to let us know what you have to do to help keep our schools safe, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
And one thing that all of us saw while we were listening to the different presenters in this conference is if we hear the word liability one more time, all we can think of is that we are liable, no matter what is, no matter how we think we plan, we're still liable. But anyway, one of the, to me, one of the most important, I guess, programs was staying out of the news headlines and keeping in line with the law, which is what we want to do, and it just simply stressed training, 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 and maintaining your equipment, such as your cameras, things like that that you needed, and so you would not be liable, or we would not be liable in the event we had not done something. So, just one thing he did mention also is that board members need to visit schools, which I'm guilty of not doing enough, and training areas that might possibly be, problem areas might be training substitutes because they come and go through the schools quite often. And one, the one thing I wanted to add cyber awareness, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, but that presenter said, "Most of these attacks are coming from foreign countries, China or Russia," right? But he said, "They have, to our one agent, they have 50,000." And I thought that was staggering. And then just another note, something that I had not really realized, but in work with comp cases, those workers who accept 2/3 of the payroll loss time, they are considered officially separated from your district or from the state, and those days will not be counted in their time for retirement or other things, and I don't think people realize that when they settle some of these claims. But it was, it was very important.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Miss Chairman, if I could add something?
Yes.
So, speaking on AI that Mr. Bautknight mentioned, I was at a manager's meeting at work, and one of the guys was presenting, and he said, "Before I go on, I have, we have a message from our president, president of our company." So, I will play a video. So, he turns on his video, and we're all sitting there watching that, and the president was over there going. And when it was over, he said, "That wasn't really your president, that was his avatar." He said, "I made that," and he didn't even know it. And it was with some cheap downloadable thing off the internet, some app, and the only thing that you could, the only thing that was sideways was the lips didn't exactly match the words, it was just off slightly. So, don't even believe what you see now.
It's bright.
Because it's, with what I saw, probably most any kid could download that and show us something that we might believe, so anyway.
Thank you for that. It hits closer home than we think sometimes.
It did. Can I have one of those? The phone calls that you get, and you answer it, and there is no response, they're probably trying to copy your voice, so don't keep saying hello. He's, or he, the presenter said, "All right, I've discounted my voice." So, how obvious, but.
Like I said, makes you stop and think, so.
Well, you just realize how trusting we are and how they are really making an attempt to use our drugs.
Using abuse, you're right, good. Thank you all. All right, we will move on now to our action items. Item 6.0, 6.1 is approved, oh, I am sorry, Mr. Potts, I just jumped right ahead of you. I apologize. Let's back up, and we're going to finish with 5.2, Assessment and Accountability Update from Jeff Potts. And again, I apologize.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam Chair and Dr. Atkinson. Tonight, I plan to share with you an overview of our state report cards. Hopefully, you'll get an idea of what are the elements that make up each school's report card and the implications that the ratings exist with on our planning and our strategies that we have in the district. First, I want to share with you just the elements that make up the specific report card, each category. There are some changes that exist for this year. One of them, one of the main ones deals with Preparing for Success Indicator, grades IV and grade VI. The SC Ready Science was a pilot this last year, so those scores don't count in the, within that category itself. And also, there's a brand-new category at the high school called High School Student Success, and so we'll talk a little bit more about those. There are some implications on the weights of these categories as well. The fact that there's no SC Ready Science, they've taken the points that exist for elementary and middle, and they've kind of divided it into the academic achievement and within the student progress. And also, the High School Student Success category, they made 12 points, and they've, so they've taken some of that from graduation rate and college and career readiness. First category I want to share is academic achievement, and so academic achievement is based upon SC Ready ELA and SC Ready Math for elementary and middle schools, and also Algebra I and English II, and of course, exams at the high school. Each school has a specific rating level that's based upon how well students perform, so the more students that you have scoring As and Bs, or the more students that you have scoring exemplaries and Mets, the higher your overall performance is going to be. You'll see in the excellent category, you'll see the maximum number of points for these, for these levels, 35 at elementary and middle, and 25 points at the high school. This is a category that weighs very heavily on the report card ratings for each of the schools. At the bottom, you'll see the total points that have been earned in academic achievement, and you can see highlighted what those ratings are, the sub-ratings are for academic achievement. The next one is Preparing for Success. This is really dealing with science and social studies at the high school this year, and so, again, as I stated earlier, SC Ready, fourth and sixth grade. The fact that there's no SC Ready Science, they've taken the points that exist for elementary and middle, and they've kind of divided it into the academic achievement and within the student progress. And also, the High School Student Success category, they made 12 points, and they've, so they've taken some of that from graduation rate and college and career readiness. First category I want to share is academic achievement. And so academic achievement is based upon SC Ready ELA and SC Ready Math for elementary and middle schools, and also Algebra I and English II, and of course exams at the high school. Each school has a specific rating level that's based upon how well students perform. So the more students that you have scoring As and Bs, or the more students that you have scoring exemplaries and Mets, the higher your overall performance is going to be. You'll see in the, in the excellent category, you'll see the maximum number of points for these, for these levels, 35 at elementary and middle, and 25 points at the high school. This is a category that weighs very heavily on the report card ratings for each of the schools. At the bottom, you'll see the total points that have been earned in academic achievement, and you can see highlighted what those ratings are, the sub-ratings are for academic achievement. The next one is Preparing for Success. This is really dealing with science and social studies at the high school this year. And so, again, as I stated earlier, SC Ready, fourth and sixth grade scores do not count this year, since those were pilot scores. For 2024, the Preparing for Success assesses the academic performance in those areas. And just like with the, the academic achievement, the more students that you have performing at high levels, the more points that you're going to receive. Student progress is primarily a growth measure. It's looking at students' performance year in, year out, from one year to the next, and tracking how that student performs. In the past, this was just a black box type of a system. Data goes in, the state does some calculations, and they push the data back to us about how students perform. This year, it's kind of a mixed bag. They have added in a new growth system at, at the state level. And some of that, we can actually see how students perform and get an idea almost immediately when we get the scores back, how students perform. The black box part, we have to wait literally until the report card ratings come out. So this is primarily how, how students perform on ELA and, and in math for SC Ready, in grades four through eight. The next indicator brings attention to the multilingual learner's progress, where you're going to notice all of our schools received an unsatisfactory rating. This rating, however, does reflect a shift in how the state is actually calculating this metric. In the past, all students who have, who have passed the Access for ELLS exam and meet the criteria for English proficiency, go through a four-year monitoring progress, or four-year monitoring time period. In the past, all of those students counted in this metric. And each year that they progressed, they also counted as meeting progression to the next, to the next level. They have removed, the state has removed all those students from the calculation. So any students that we have had that has exited out in the past, no longer count towards us. And it wasn't just the Lexington III thing. At the state level, we went from about 53% of students meeting progress to about 38% of students meeting progress. So there was a big shift in how the state ended up calculating the metric to this. Not that this looks great, but I do want to share that, looking at what we had last year versus this year, and if you remove the students who make the progress, it really isn't any different than how we scored in the past. And I think a lot of schools within the state are trying to figure out, what, what does that actually mean from one year to the next? The next category is graduation rate. South Carolina calculates graduation rate at the high school level based upon the percentage of students who graduate within four years upon entering high school. So I'm pleased to share with you that we've had 87.8% of our students graduate last year. If you look at our percentage of students who've graduated over the last five or six years, it has fluctuated between about 86 and about 90, 91%, so at the top level. So we've really been within that threshold for some period of time. The last two years, we've had a good rating. And this year, even though it looks like we have less points overall, we actually are scoring more points per, within this category. There was a shift based upon a new category that came in. So we are scoring higher than we did last year, based upon the number of points that we are receiving. College and, college and career readiness is another metric that evaluates whether our students who are in that same cohort, cohort of graduating students, whether or not they're prepared for post-secondary opportunities, which include things like college, technical school, and of course, entering the work, the workforce. The indicator considers various metrics such as earning career readiness certificates, things like AP course performance, and benchmarks on assessments such as the SAT and the ACT. So this year, we earn an excellent in that category, and so we'll consider this a really big win, because it's an incredible improvement from where it was even last year. The new category that we have for this year is High School Student Success. This tracks student performance each year that a student is in high school. So last year, or this, this, I guess the last report card is the first time that this metric was included. And really, they're looking at students who go from a freshman year to sophomore year, and whether or not they're earning enough course credit, they're getting a credit in ELA and math to be considered a sophomore. And so next year, it'll add in another cohort of kids. And so it'll be not just the freshmen and sophomore, but also go from sophomore to a junior. So each year, they're adding another cohort of students. So High School Student Success is 86.4%. And that includes, that's, they're looking at the entire cohort of students. So if you think about where we're at with graduating, almost all of the students that we had graduating last year are students that, oh, I'm sorry, almost all the students that we have last year, 86.4, are moving forward from freshman to their sophomore level on time. So that's really good. School Climate is one of the last big ratings that are big categories that we have. It's a critical component of overall school performance, and it assesses the learning environment that we have within our schools. It's a little bit hard to try to parse out this metric. It is a combination of about 20-some different surveys that exist from the teacher and the student surveys. But essentially, just know that this category is based on those survey responses, and they really focus on things like safety, respect, and the perceived support that, that students and teachers get within the school. And overall, it looks pretty good for our schools. Good average and good across the schools. That is great. I did share with you the point systems. You're going to notice there's some stars next to a couple of these, where they had to refactor the calculations, it's just based upon the fact that there, there weren't any Preparing for Success indicators because of the science. Overall, I want to give you just an idea of what each of those sub-ratings look like. I've highlighted the ones that are yellow, where the category has dropped, and the green, where things improved from last year. Overall rating points by the schools, I want to be, you to be able to see not only what each school rated, but where they're at within that rating system. I know many of our school, our principals have been talking about, what do I need to get to the next level? So how many points do we need to squeak out, or how many, what kind of things can we do? So those are continued conversations that, that are, that's happening within the schools. Last slide is just to show you, over the last three years, where the ratings have been for each of our schools. And so obviously, ratings can fluctuate from one year to the next. Each cohort is different. Certainly, the high school can attest to that in terms of the graduation rate. But I do want to share with you that we did have one school that earned a below-average rating in '24. And so the district, along with the elementary school, is going to be required to develop what's considered a turnaround plan. It's going to be something that we have to look at data in partnership with the community, and asking, you know, build upon the data and the needs assessments that we have to look at targeted intervention and create new goals within the school. So that's a, that's, that's a lengthy summary of our, our school ratings. Do any of you have any questions based upon what I've shared?
The turnaround, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The turnaround plan, is that something we develop based on our shortage? Do they tell us what we have to do, kind of what?
So I, I think the idea is, I think they give us the autonomy to be able to say, these are the things that we should do. But I mean, even looking at, even looking at what we've just seen, I think, you know, one of the biggest places that we could probably make gains is in areas like ELA and math. But you know, at the elementary and middle school, almost 75% of the rating that they have is based upon how students perform in those two, those two areas. So generally, I'd say that's probably going to be a focus of that. But the state gives us the autonomy to be able to do that. And so the state has different levels of turnaround plans. We're, we're not at the lowest level that exists for a turnaround plan. I can't remember the date in which those have to be turned in. I think it's late January.
We've gotten the document, they give us an outline of what we need to do, but we, we choose our strategies, and we'll be involving you all in those, and you'll, you'll approve or not approve that plan, so you'll, you'll be part of that process.
I was going to ask that too, if we'll have an opportunity to review the plan. So that's, that's good.
Yep.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Since it's 2024, and it's the lower school, my theory, or my thoughts, might be that this has got something to do with COVID in that class three years, you know, several years ago, those years that so many didn't come to K4, and then we had the younger ones. And I just wonder how much of an impact COVID has on this.
Well, I, I don't think you're going to find, the principal's going to say there's no impact that COVID's had on any of the students that we've had.
Right. Because this is just the younger ones who are just getting started, and it makes a huge difference.
Does make a huge difference, so.
A question.
Oh, sure.
I just would like to add, if you would, if you will, every meeting I go to, there is not a district hardly in the state who doesn't have one of these schools. We are, we are all sharing this. And when people found out that this had happened with our elementary school, I immediately started getting sample plans from other districts. So I'm not going to say it's absolutely inevitable, but with the current system we're operating under, it is highly likely that every district will, will be dealing with these things.
I think it's something like three out of every four districts in the state has at least one school with a plan.
Well, and part of it is that there's different calibrations every year. So it's like hitting a moving target.
Yep. And I don't think they make it easier for schools every year.
They don't.
One question that I was going to ask, but you pretty much answered it in your presentation, and I appreciate that, was this with the High School Student Success, and what is used to determine that? And just to make sure I understood that correctly, they track just the ninth to 10th grade, and that's all the tracking for that?
They, they do add one other cohort of kids. They look at the number of students from the prior graduation year, and they look at fifth-year graduates too. So if there's any additional fifth-year graduates that exist from last, from the prior year's graduation cohort, that's, that's kind of an added bonus.
Okay.
For us as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So back to that turnover plan, that's obviously happening next year, but is it a one-year plan?
It's a year, for, for us, it's a year-to-year plan. And so we can, I think we exit out based upon how we perform on next year's report card. Yep.
And this has nothing to do with the fact that it's a Title I school? That's completely.
There, there are some different things that associate with that, but this is not Title I specific, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good job, thank you. Now, we're going to jump to 6.0, I think I wanted to jump to a while ago, and we will get 6.1 approval for the BLHS HOSA students to attend a field trip to the Spring HOSA State Leadership Conference on March the 5th through the 7th, 2025, in Charleston, presented by Ms. Ashley Fulmer, the high school teacher in HOSA.
Hey, good evening. So I'm Ashley Fulmer. Most of you know that I am the health science teacher at the high school. I also have another partner that is Kayla Cottney, who is our athletic trainer and our sports med teacher. She and I are heading up HOSA. We started HOSA last fall with kind of putting our feelers out. This year, we actually elected officers, and we have done, as Dr. Atkinson said, we went to the Fall Conference at Newberry College. I do believe that we had the largest group there, so I was kind of proud of us. They, when I walked in to register the kids, they were like, man, y'all brought a lot of kids. I'm like, yeah, we did. So our kids are really excited. We have 38 active participants. We took 31 to that Fall Conference, excuse me, Fall Conference. So far this year, our kids have done a blood drive with the American Red Cross. We are working on a toy drive for Happy Wheels, which is for Prisma Health, that's our Christmas give back to the community, and it stays all at Prisma Richland. And so we're working on that. But our kids are super excited to go to Charleston, especially after they spent the day on Newberry College's campus. They were able to go to their health science building and do one-on-one activities in their labs, and talk with some of the teachers at Newberry College. I had a couple of kids go, man, I didn't know that forensics was part of health science. And I'm like, yeah, guys. So they are excited. They know that if they go to Charleston, they must compete. Mr. Regenti told me last year, if you take them, they compete and we bring back winners. So that is our goal. There are a plethora of competition areas that they can compete in. So my request to you all is just to approve this. We have some CTSO money that, and they will work on fundraising as well. So it's, they're, they're willing to work, and I'm willing to work with them.
Good.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Fulmer, any questions? Okay.
Okay. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the BLHS HOSA students for, to attend a field trip to the Spring HOSA State Leadership Conference on March 5 through 7, 2025, in Charleston, South Carolina.
We have a motion from Ms. Carey to, for approval for the BLHS HOSA students to attend a field trip to the Spring HOSA State Leadership Conference on March the 5th through the 7th, 2025, in Charleston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second with Ms. Derry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right, Ms. Bryant, we have first reading approval of Policy IJ Instructional Resources and Materials.
Thank you, Ms. Burgess. These are sort of a continuation of what you guys gave second reading to last month. You know, of course, that there was legislation this year that we had to adjust some things related to our instructional materials and resources. So Mrs. Burgess, if it is okay with you, I thought we could do these in a clump, because they're very similar.
You can do that, that will be great.
Basically, Policy IJ just deals with general instructional materials and resources, and then IJL adds the library materials to that. So they're all sort of the same thing. So both policies were issued in November of 2022. These proposed changes that I'm submitting tonight come from the South Carolina School Boards Association, and I did neglect in saying that it came to our attention that there were a couple of typographical errors. So we've given you an updated copy at your, at your table. So if you see some strange typos, those have been fixed. So, in the old ones, but the identification of what has been classified as instructional resources has just been expanded to include all instructional materials. So in the past, it was taught very much about text, and was very much text-dependent, and now it includes everything that is used by a teacher or librarian in the school. And one thing that was in our existing policy was the seeking parental and community input. We have not done that as a practice, and it is not part of the, the law. So we have, we're recommending to remove that. And this term, age and developmentally appropriate, is how everything is judged as whether it should be in that school or not. So that is the term specifically from the law. So we wanted to make sure that we change those terms to match that. And the last things are, with the library materials, they have to be uploaded onto the website. And so our librarians, we are in compliance with that already. All four librarians have got that on their website. Ms. Taylor helped them make sure that that was there and appropriate. With the instructional resources, the law doesn't say it has to be posted, it just has to be readily available. So we have gotten a process in for our teachers to compile those lists that we think is manageable for them. We're compiling those lists as we teach things through the year, because it would have been virtually impossible for them to list everything that they have in their, in their classrooms. But they're doing it as they do their lesson plans each week. And those just have to be available, and they understand that. So we're, all four schools have developed some mechanism, some Google Sheets or Excel or something or another, to make sure that they have those. So, do I have any questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the administration's recommended changes to policies IJ and IJL, as presented by Ms. Bryant.
I have a motion from Dr. Gunnar to approve the administration's recommendation, recommended changes to policies IJ and IJL, as presented by Ms. Bryant. Do I have a second? A second. I have a second from Ms. Bultnike. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval for these two policies, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, 6.4. All right, um, six point four and six point five is first reading approval of policy DJC Capital Lease Agreement and first reading approval of policy AR DJC dash R Capital Lease Agreement presented by Ms. Roden, our Chief Financial Officer.
Hi, I also would like to combine these two, if you're fine with it, they go together. Okay, tonight we're proposing capital lease agreements and the administrative rule for capital lease agreements. These policies provide the necessary accounting and procedural guidelines relating to Gatsby eighty-seven and Gatsby ninety-six, dealing with capital lease agreements for equipment and subscription-based IT agreements. These guidelines were in effect for twenty-two, twenty-three, and we complied when we completed last year's audit. But our auditors highly recommended that we develop a policy, adopt one, and show how we account for the leases and subscription-based IT agreements. You've received these, um, guidelines, what we've, um, would like to adopt in your packet. Do you have any questions? If not, we'd like to, uh, present these as first reading.
Any questions? All right.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we give first reading approval of policy DJC Capital Lease Agreement and Policy AR DJC dash R Capital Lease Agreement as presented.
Um, we have a motion for Mr. Kaufman to approve policy DJC and administrative rule AR DJC dash R Capital Lease Agreements as recommended by the administration. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second with Ms. Derry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, now at this time, we will add item, we will, um, do item six point six, approval for a newly elected school board member to attend the twenty twenty-four South Carolina School Boards Association Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charleston, South Carolina on December seventh and eighth, twenty twenty-four. And we, um, heard Mr. Kaufman's explanation of this and why we felt that we needed to add this. Um, are there any other questions? All right, hearing none.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve item six point six for the newly elected school board member to attend the twenty twenty-four South Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charleston, South Carolina on December the seventh and eighth, twenty twenty-four.
All right, we have a motion for Mr. Kaufman to approve item six point six for the newly elected school board member to attend the twenty twenty-four South Carolina School Boards Association's Legislative Advocacy Conference in Charleston, South Carolina on December seventh and eighth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second with Ms. Faulknight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Um, item seven point oh, executive session. Do I have any motions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we use move into executive session for discussion of contractual and personnel matters, including superintendent's evaluation.
We have a motion from Ms. Carey to move into executive session for discussion of contractual and personnel matters, including the superintendent's evaluation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second with Ms. Derry. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We are now in executive session. I'm telling you.